Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 29, 2018. It's 8:19 a.m. I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll call?
Counselperson's, I'm sorry, Mayor Panjack?
Here.
Counselperson Zaversa?
Here.
E. Park?
Here.
O. Here.
Ms. Morrow?
Here.
M. Park?
Here.
Woe?
Here.
For our attorney?
Present.
For our administrator?
Sure.
And municipal clerk. Everyone's present, ma'am.
Thank you. Please all rise and reflect. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its liberty and right for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. There was one item of correspondence here on our agenda, a May 24, 2018 email with attachments from Resident Lauren Eastwood regarding alleged improper contact with the Burrow County Prosecutor's Office by Councilwoman Ellen Park and Senator Loretta Weinberg. Who joins us today, I see? Good morning. I'd like to do the closed session first and then come back to public comment. Can I have a motion to go into closed session, please? So moved.
Okay.
One favor.
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the appropriate language for us to go into closed session?
Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, and whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, NJASA 10:4-12. Pending litigation and contract, Eastwood versus the borough of Englewood Cliffs, discussion of our accused's solicitation, appointment of counsel for defendant Ellen Park. Number two, Ellen Park versus the borough, discussion of billing of Lawrence Cohen. Number three, Mura versus the borough, substitution of attorney, payment of legal fees, and general discussion. Fourth subject is contract and deliberations, discussion on solicitation, appointment of hearing officer, and ordinances for hearing requirements for pending and future disciplinary matters, including as to Michael Chaffey. That's it.
Point of order, ma'am, I will be entering on numbers one, two, and three, and recusing on number four for the record.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Okay, everybody got your videotapes on? Otter, you ready? You got your videotape on? Okay, let's have a motion to have a public comment.
So moved.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public?
Nothing from the agenda, we say that first.
Okay, what did we remove?
In closed session, we removed and will not be voting on Resolution 18128, assignment of Mura versus borough of Englewood Cliffs, document number B E R L 76-76 to the borough attorney.
Got it.
It has been taken off the agenda.
Did we have to do a motion to come out of closed?
We did it already.
Okay, we did it.
Thank you.
You were writing. Okay, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, wait for me to recognize you, come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Anybody from the public? Yes.
My phone said, oh, it's 2:50 in front of me.
Just push it down.
You should just have it over here.
Yes. If you forget it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and good morning. I noticed that before the public comment on your agenda, it has a place for correspondence, email, and attachments from L. Eastwood Ray alleged improper contact with the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office by Councilwoman Ellen Park and Senator Loretta Weinberg. Has that been removed from the agenda?
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Loretta Weinberg, Tina, New Jersey.
It's on the agenda, ma'am.
It's listed on the agenda before public comment.
Right, it's staying there.
So is it just, if I may, is it just a receipt of that correspondence?
It's a receipt of that correspondence.
Okay, is there any action going to be taken?
Not today.
All right. Since it is on your agenda, first of all, I am here to answer any questions that any of you might have. It is a little unsettling to read an agenda without having contacted me personally, find out the background, or to find out any information, to read on the agenda.
Well, it's also very unsettling to have you reach out to the Bergen County Prosecutor in an active investigation without contacting me, so that's my position.
Well, I would, ma'am, perhaps we should have contacted you. However, my office handles constituent inquiries like this probably two, three, four a week. Constituents come to us because of problems with the bureaucracy, because they can't get answers, or general problems they have in their lives, and we handle each and every one of them in exactly the same way. I sent a letter to the prosecutor's office and said, Councilwoman Ellen Park suggested that she is not able to get information from the council. The prosecutor answered me within two or three days, instructed your administrator, your town attorney, you, to immediately share that information. So I'm assuming that my contact to the prosecutor's office helped bring to light a communication problem that your council seems to have. You are all elected officials. I deal with state legislation which governs things like open public meetings, documents, et cetera. You are all equal elected officials entitled to whatever information is supposed to be disseminated. That is what the county prosecutor said, and that is what I'm assuming was actually done here.
We don't have a communication problem, Senator. What we have is a political problem where people cannot shed their political covers and do their jobs without reaching out to another politician like yourself to interfere with an investigation which should not be done, okay? That is our problem. You could have called me, and I would have told you that every member on this council gets all the information that they need to make decisions. They choose to ignore, not read, be political. That's their problem, they're failing to do their jobs, and I thank you for being here today.
Well, apparently, there are members of your council who are constituents of mine along with the rest of you, who don't feel they're getting all of that information. Apparently, the county prosecutor's office had to order you to share the information.
That's not true. That's not true. And as a vice chairwoman of the Legislative Oversight Committee, I would have thought that you would know better than to contact a prosecutor in a pending investigation and basically flex your political muscle in an investigation, because that's how you signed off your letter, okay?
I signed, what do you mean, I don't follow you, how I signed off my letter.
Yes, you're recognized.
Is there anything else?
I just want to caution council members that the underlying matter is an internal affairs investigation involving our chief, and the facts of that matter should not be discussed.
Nor, if I may, nor were the facts of that matter shared with me, nor did I request that they be shared with me.
For the record, I'm not speaking on any specific matter, I'm speaking on the actions that the senator took and what her actions represent to me, and I will be speaking for myself. Senator, I have your letter here that was provided to, I'm assuming, this entire council that has redactions. I also have Councilwoman Park's letter, which is filled with mistruths. I would like to ask you, as an elected official, as a senator, and I can understand that you receive many emails and letters from constituents, I'd like to know the ratio of how many are Republicans and how many are Democrats that you respond to and take this type of an action which I've never heard of before. And quite frankly, I'm very disappointed there's no newspaper here, and this for me is a matter of public concern, and the entire state of New Jersey should know what is going on and what you did. Because I'm going to read what you wrote. You wrote, Dear Acting Prosecutor Kalo. Now prosecutors, they're political appointments, correct?
They are.
They are political appointments, okay.
Correct.
So that in and of itself, if I was a political appointee and I'm receiving a letter from a senator?
The acting prosecutor is not a political appointee.
Okay, but it's still, okay, I just wanted to understand how prosecutors get appointed. I understand, so right there, you're not saying you have anything in your mind to cause you any type of a question or a doubt. I understand. From Englewood Cliffs, Councilwoman Ellen Park, you also included Councilwoman O. and Councilman Zaversa, which I don't know if they contacted you or not, I'm just stating for the record what your letter, what you wrote on their behalf, which by the way, I don't see you copied anybody on that letter. I understand from Englewood Cliffs Councilwoman Ellen Park, Councilwoman Gloria, and Councilman Edward Zaversa, that they have been denied access to, and you're talking about internal affairs performed by your office. Where did you question anyone? Why didn't you take Councilwoman Park at her word and not contact anybody else? Did it never occur to you that, hold on, I want to ask my question, Senator, please? This is so disappointing to see that you did something like this to me. How could it not enter your mind that maybe she embellished something, maybe she exaggerated, maybe there were some other items that she left out before you took your position and entered into a prosecutor's office? How could I, I, not as one of your constituents, forget elected official, how could I ever trust, put my trust as a voter in you again, to not think that you're not writing to judges, that you're not writing to anybody else that holds any type of authority over how a vote is going to go? This scares me. This scares me that you wrote to an acting prosecutor who then, you end, you say that these council members are being denied access to this report. How do you know that if you did not, by your own admission, not reach out to anyone on this council? And then you end your letter with, as the appropriate authority, Councilwoman Park, Councilwoman O. and Councilman Zaversa are entitled to review these documents. Well, first of all, everybody's entitled, unless you have a conflict and you can't review it, everybody's entitled to, not just three Democratic constituents of yours, everyone would be able to. And then you ended to the prosecutor?
When you finish this, by the way, I'd be happy to answer some of your questions.
And then at the end, you ended, since Englewood Cliffs are preventing them from doing so, so you've already made a judgment without speaking to anyone. I am requesting your office to make arrangements for them to review this report. You're telling the prosecutor what to do! You're an elected official, and you're telling a prosecutor what to do? I've never, I can't even believe what I'm writing, reading. I anxiously wait.
Here's, you can respond, Senator.
Yes, first of all, let me start out with the beginning. We never asked anybody, any constituent in our office, whether they are Republicans, Democrats, or independents.
But you know who they are. You know who they are, Senator.
You're me, Councilwoman.
I'm not going to sit here and listen to that.
Well, then, of course.
Your letter speaks for itself, ma'am.
My hour and a half here is wasted if you choose not to sit here and listen, you've made quite a few accusations.
Your letter speaks for itself, ma'am.
You've made quite a few accusations, and I do believe it is my chance now to answer. We never ask a constituent what party they represent. And by the way, and I'm sure I can produce them from you, from my file, if you wish, we make a habit of never writing to judges in active cases. We always make a habit of writing to the appropriate authorities. Now remember, I had some background in this. I remember when Councilwoman Park had to go to court to get this council ordered to share documents with her.
It's another mistruth, ma'am.
Excuse me, this did not come to me in a vacuum.
It's another mistruth, ma'am.
Senator Weinberg, you seem very interested in Englewood Cliffs, and I thank you for your interest.
As I am in all 13 towns I live in.
And I welcome you to Englewood Cliffs, and it's actually the new Englewood Cliffs, where we actually follow the rules, follow the laws, and we call out people who don't. And I suppose, I didn't intend for this to happen to you, but you came here under your own volition.
I did.
And you're getting it now from us, because we're very disappointed that you would try to influence a prosecution or an investigation. And, oh, hold on, let me finish. And you didn't even, you didn't reach out to me. You didn't reach out to me. You could have just called me and said, "Mayor, is everybody getting information?" I would have said, "Yes, Senator, they are." And, you know, somebody who's the vice chairwoman of the Legislative Oversight Committee, I would have thought that you would follow a process and not just be political, but I view you as very political. And just for the record, I don't agree with a lot what's going on down in Trenton right now. We're not going to be a sanctuary city, we're not going to support a lot of the things that you and your people are supporting, but as far as we can, we're going to make sure that we run this town to the letter of the law. And if somebody like you, we don't care if it's the President of the United States, the Senate Majority Leader, trying to reach out to our prosecutor, tell them to do or not to do something, you're going to hear it from me loud and clear.
And, ma'am, point of order, Senator, I did reach out to you. For the first time in 2009, you never returned my calls, ever. Your office didn't return my calls? That was when they ripped 18, they defaced 18 political signs of mine, drawing mustaches all over, and ripping them out with cranes. Somebody ordered someone from the DOT to rip my signs out along Sylvan Avenue, and I reached out to you for help, Senator.
Councilwoman Ms. Morrow, if we did not respond to your request to investigate who ripped out signs in some prior campaign.
Cranes, they were cranes.
Aye. Cranes, whatever, ripped out the signs.
I had close, close.
Now, please, let the senator finish. You keep interrupting. Let her finish.
Okay, let the senator finish. Okay, let's let the senator finish.
What I said was, we never ask constituents what their party affiliation is before we answer them.
And you just didn't do research.
And I am really sorry if we did not respond to refer your complaint to the appropriate authority about your signs being ripped out and mustaches being drawn on them. I apologize if we did not forward that to the appropriate authority. But from what I understand and what I read, Councilwoman Park had to go to court in order to get documents that should be shared with all of the elected officials. Now let me make it clear, I didn't order the assistant prosecutor, the acting prosecutor, pardon me, to do anything. The first letter, the first sentence of the letter, and did you say you had a redacted copy?
Yes, ma'am.
I can give you the full copy, I don't know where.
No, it's redacted from the prosecutor under Open Public Records Act.
Well, I don't understand his response or my letter. Did you get a written response from the prosecutor? I did.
Okay, we don't have that? And I'd also like to say, since I was the only one in contact with the prosecutor about the underlying matter, that they never had to direct or instruct me to do anything. They approved my plan for the dissemination of the information, and it was tightly controlled because it had to do with internal affairs. And while the council members who complained, particularly Councilwoman Park, may have been upset about the limitations that were put on that.
No.
I.e., excuse me, i.e. both time and method of dissemination of the information was of high concern to this borough and to this borough attorney, and the prosecutor directly agreed with me that those limitations needed to be placed because it was confidential information under the Attorney General's guidelines. It had to do with an IA matter of a police officer. Now you may say you help all of your constituents, each and every one of them, and I'm pleased to hear any elected official say that, but when you are requested to write to a prosecutor and get involved in an ongoing matter that is internal affairs or criminal, I would think that you would hesitate before involving yourself in that. This was not merely a document being withheld, this was an internal affairs investigation report and CDs of interviews of witnesses. You frankly should not have involved yourself, nor should Councilwoman Park have involved yourself. Now I've looked at the Ethics Code for the state, and I've looked at the Ethics Code for the borough, and these kinds of communications are frowned upon, if not outright barred, particularly in the case of the council member.
May I read to you the prosecutor's answer?
Just one second, I just want to make the point. We were not, I, for the borough, was not denying access, I was limiting access appropriately in both time and method.
Emma, excuse me.
There's video and there are emails, okay? Let's call it what it is. Okay. Ellen, you may see it your way, and I may see it my way, and I know that when the prosecutor and I spoke two days after the date, three days after the date of Senator Weinberg's letter, the prosecutor agreed with me that since it was going to be discussed at the next Wednesday council meeting, the limitation of review by council members over the course of three days before that meeting was sufficient and appropriate, and all the other limitations that I put in place with the borough clerk to ensure that none of that information walked out the door, was photographed by a phone, or taped recorded by a phone, these were appropriate access limitations, not denial. And you did not call the mayor, you did not call the borough clerk, who the council member had written a very nasty letter about me to the prosecutor. Excuse me, Ellen, you're interrupting. All I am saying to you is, I do believe, forget about politics for a second, or forget about the underlying issues, I do believe you should hesitate before getting involved in an internal affairs matter, or a criminal matter, or even a motor vehicle ticket on the side of the road, okay? So, I really do.
Those points are well taken. Moreover, you know, Senator Weinberg, I understand that you also vote for a prosecutor to be appointed, right? So here we have an acting prosecutor, and you're writing to them. Now this person may or may not be waiting for a vote in the future.
And he is not, nor is he interested in the position.
Okay, well, that's right now.
And now may I read his reply to me?
You may.
Please. You made a lot of protestations here. I wrote to him on April 3rd. His letter is dated April 6th. Dear Senator Weinberg, please be advised that I received your April 3rd letter in reference to certain members of the borough Englewood Cliffs Council being denied access to internal investigation materials regarding the chief of police. In response, Assistant Prosecutor Brian Sinclair, the chief of our confidential investigations unit, contacted Englewood Cliffs Borough Attorney Anne Marie Rizzuto. He explained that the material must be made available to all council members, the procedure for review of the materials, and the findings that must be made. Ms. Rizzuto assured Mr. Sinclair that she would make the materials available to all council members on Monday, April 9.
So exactly what I said is what happened.
Yeah, exactly, that the prosecutor's office.
But it wasn't because of.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
That the prosecutor's office called you and told you that you must disseminate the information, and that, that's what the prosecutor said.
Okay.
And that you assured him that you would be doing that on April 9.
Yes, I understand.
That was my only interest in this.
And prior to that.
That continues to be my only interest.
And prior to that.
And I am glad, I am glad that the prosecutor's office did call you and did instruct you to disseminate all of the information, and obviously, I'm assuming, that was done.
You have a misperception, because the prosecutor didn't direct me to do anything. The prosecutor agreed with the methods and limitations that I was doing. The prosecutor agreed with it. Brian Sinclair, hold on a second.
I'm sure he must.
And I also want to tell you that I had been working with the prosecutor three or four times before your letter in developing what we needed to do to give the IA report so they could review it.
Well, he obviously didn't state that in his letter.
Well, that's the assistant prosecutor, that's the acting prosecutor, excuse me, and not the one responsible, which is Brian Sinclair, who I work with on a monthly basis on matters. All I am saying is, you are under a misperception. We didn't have to be told by the prosecutor, excuse me, we didn't have to be told by the prosecutor.
You did.
What to do. That is inaccurate.
But can I speak now?
No, you're interrupting me.
You're saying the same thing over and over again.
All right, is that a point of order?
Yes.
The chairman?
Yes, can I?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, we've never had a problem with how you disseminated the information. You kept delaying and delaying months and months since you got in the decision, which was in February, correct? Right? It took a letter in April to get me the information or get us the information. Again, that's what we're talking about. You're trying to derail us to the point where we are talking about not how the information was disseminated. You received a determination from the VCPO in February, and you kept it from us until April, until that letter was issued.
That's not accurate. First of all, you're saying you, as if I received.
Correct.
Excuse me, borough administrator received it and assigned it to Mark Rutterman. I never saw it, to this day, I have never.
You said Sinclair, and you had just said that you spoke to him three times prior to this letter, and you did, I know that.
I spoke to him multiple times.
But I would just think that.
I never saw the IA file.
All right, look, I would just think that the people from the great state of New Jersey would want their Senate Majority Leader to be spending their Tuesday morning doing something good for their state rather than political for the Democratic Party in Englewood Cliffs. And that's why you're here, I know it, I understand it.
No, ma'am, why I'm here is because my name was on your agenda. That's why I'm here. Believe me when I tell you, I was not looking forward to coming to a meeting in Englewood Cliffs at 8:00 a.m. on the morning after Memorial Day. It was not my idea to do so. It was because my name was on your agenda.
I just want to know how many more letters are out there that you've written to prosecutors that people don't know about, that should know about? And if you want to be transparent, tell us, as a public, as a state, as a resident. We want to know when you interfere with investigations.
I never interfere with investigations.
You just did.
And I resent that.
You just did.
I was very.
That's why you're here, you're trying to cover it up now. You're here because you know you interfered, and you got called out, and now you're here dealing with it.
What am I covering up, ma'am? I didn't put my name on it.
The last time I looked at that letter, I was not copied on that letter.
You were not copied.
Right. Don't you think I should have been copied?
I said at the beginning of my remarks, perhaps you were right, that I should have contacted you. I believe I started out.
It was not politically expedient to do so.
But it doesn't change the facts of this. I did not ask for any information about the internal investigation, nor did I get any information.
You could run Trenton however you want, but when you come to Englewood Cliffs, we follow the rules.
Well, apparently not, because according to the acting prosecutor, they had to call your attorney, who then assured, I'm only reading what the letter said.
You're creating a false narrative now, which is digging you down that rabbit hole even more. You are now circling the drain, ma'am. I really got to move on.
All right, ma'am, I'll be very happy to let you move on. Believe me, I will. But let me tell you something else.
Don't you think I should have been copied?
I said at the beginning of my remarks, perhaps you were right, that I should have contacted you. I believe I started out...
It was not politically expedient to do so.
But it doesn't change the facts of this. I did not ask for any information about the internal investigation, nor did I get any information.
You could run Trenton however you want, but when you come to Englewood Cliffs, we follow the rules.
Well, apparently not because, according to the acting prosecutor, they had to call your attorney, who then assured, I'm only reading what the letter said.
You're creating a false narrative now, which is digging you down that rabbit hole even more. You are now circling the drain, ma'am. I really got to move on.
All right, Mayor, I'll be very happy to let you move on. Believe me, I will. But let me tell you something else. Anytime that I feel that half the elected officials in this town or any other town are not getting the information that they should be getting because somebody spent months putting roadblocks in their way, I will be doing other letters asking for investigations. I can assure you of that. Now, if you, I am, I read to you exactly what the assistant prosecutor said. And I'm reading the letter. I called your attorney and the attorney assured me that on April 9, she would be dispensing these documents. That's exactly what this letter says. I'll be happy to give you a...
Thank you.
Senator, Senator, thank you so much for coming. And by the way, we didn't get the information on April 9.
Okay. You wouldn't have read it anyway.
That's okay, but Mayor, Senator Weinberg, Senator Weinberg, Senator Weinberg. I'm bringing to your attention that the letter that Ellen Park wrote to the prosecutor is filled with mistruths. I want to see you open your investigation. You just said that if somebody brings something to your attention, I'm asked, open it up.
No, I think you should write to the prosecutor so that they can point out the mistruth.
I'm bringing it to your attention, Senator, but am I a Republican? Is that why? Is that why you won't look into it, Senator?
I'm sorry.
Is it because I'm a Republican that you will not look into what I'm asking you to look into? This letter, this letter is, I don't need to write to you, Senator. I'm bringing it to your attention. You have brought yourself into it.
I think we've...
And I will be happy to...
All right, let's move on with our...
I'm bringing it to your attention now.
It's just the one I...
Happy that?
Yes.
Let's see how fast you do an investigation, please. I'll get a copy.
Ask James, tell me things.
Would you make a copy of that for us?
And James, by the way, would you tell the Senator, Senator Weinberg, this is James Barbary, our new administrator, excuse me, did I not, in your presence, tell Councilwoman Park, other than privileged information with an attorney that's representing me, did I not call her into your office and say whatever you need, Ellen, I will show you? No, tell the Senator.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. You got the truth.
Thank you, thank you, Senator.
Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard? Yes.
How many copies do you need?
Just one.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street, Englewood Cliffs. I feel like I'm living in an alternate universe. I attended each mayor and council meeting and the meeting that prompted, or I believe the meeting that prompted the contact with Senator Weinberg was one in which charges, in one in which Mr. Rudeman presented to the council the following statement. He said that they did not have to access any file, that the, he recommended that no vote be taken, and he said to the council that they could if they wanted to see the file, at which point Anne Marie Rizzuto said, "I disagree." And she, you, told the council people at that meeting in public that you disagreed with Mr. Rudeman and that the matter was closed and they were not voting and they did not have to see the file. You threatened them and said that litigation would ensue if the information in that file got out and it was sealed and closed. And you made a big taboo of handing the discs to Ms. Duffy at the meeting, putting them in an envelope and having them sealed, counting the discs and putting the files there. You specifically said that the council persons, all the council persons, including the Republicans who seemed to not care about it, would have no access to this file, the matter was over and done. That's what happened at the meeting. Now, you can spin whatever tales you want about what your contacts were with the prosecutor's office, but to my knowledge, nothing at that meeting, no one, each council member was told that even though they were the appropriate authority, they not only did not have to vote on the matter, but they could not see what it was they didn't have to vote on. Now, that is irresponsible.
But I was recused. Please correct your facts on that. I was recused and not even in the room. Thank you.
Great, Carol, I'm glad you were recused. So it's all the others. The matter is about access to information. Now, the appropriate authority, to my knowledge, in the law are the six council persons and the mayor, acting together, which means that they have the access and should and must have the access to the information, all the information, about which they have to act or not act. Not one person, not two persons, not three, but all seven unless one is recused. So that's what happened. So let's not change the reality.
That's what happened in open public meetings.
That's what happened in the open public...
That was a different subject matter.
No, it wasn't a different subject matter. That is what happened and that is the file and that's what happened in public and that's what prompted what happened.
I think you're sounding confused and I also...
I am not at all confused.
I also applaud your ability to find information that even I don't maybe have. And did you actually speak to Senator Weinberg also?
It's really none of your business who I speak to about anything. And don't put words in my mouth.
It sounds like you did.
It is none of your business.
It's Senator Weinberg.
I'm not answering any questions because I'm not an elected official and I don't have to.
Why? You swear to you win and you couldn't answer that question.
You can't swear me into anything. So let's not change the dialogue.
It looks like you have that opportunity not too long from now.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. Let's have more threads. Reality, honesty, trust, trust, there's no trust. Understand that the public does not trust you. Certainly, I don't trust you.
Right, and you're trustworthy yourself.
I am extremely trustworthy.
Now, you've said a lot of things about Lieutenant Muir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not a...
He's sitting behind you right now.
Yes.
He's sitting behind you. You've made it a mission to come here day in, day out and speak about Lieutenant Muir. Would you like to say something to him now that he's right behind you?
Mayor, don't change the dialogue. Lieutenant Muir and I, I don't even know Lieutenant Muir.
You've said a lot about him.
I have said a lot about him.
By knowing him, you've said a lot about him. He's right behind you now.
You have a problem. Don't change the subject. Don't change the subject. If I want to talk to Mr. Muir, Lieutenant Muir or Captain Muir today, I will do that. That is not the subject at this meeting today. I'm not going to talk about the guy to report and the fact that we had to go to court to get it released.
That's not accurate.
That is accurate. Excuse me.
Are you finished?
Everything, no. You just keep interrupting me.
Your time is up.
Oh, of course it is. Whenever the dialogue changes and you don't like the truth, you take away our time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing and hearing now, I want to have a, yes.
Laura Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. First, I would like to thank the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office for having the integrity to respond to my Oprah request in compliance with the law instead of burying and not reproducing things that were responsive to my request. So that Senator Weinberg, who seems to think that the Democrats here are saints, knows I've been waiting for months for responses to my Oprah requests for borough communications from those three. And I hope you will be intervening to see to it that they comply with Oprah. I would also like to point out that I sat on this council and I didn't get all of the information. In fact, I didn't get most of the information. I had to fight to get out access to the applications for the position of police officer. And I never once heard about Mora Rhodes flooding problem while I was on the council, probably because there were allegations against Joe Parisi's business partner, Stephen I really don't see any difference between what has happened here and Zalima Farber or the Port Authority Commissioner in camouflage. I really don't, and I think this needs to be looked into. I would also like to point out that I wrote to, this is not funny, it's not amusing. I also would, and no one's gotten more for being a loyal political soldier than you, Gloria, which is why you probably think this is amusing.
So this is all about your personal vendetta, huh?
It's not a personal vendetta. My goal is to...
Just because you didn't receive all the information, what you said on the council, it's okay for them not releasing the information to us? Is that right?
What is not okay, Councilman?
You're a political operative. You're not a regular resident. You're not a regular person.
You're out of order, Councilwoman.
Excuse me, I'm a resident just like you are.
You're a resident and you're also the political operative.
And you're her political operative and you're Parisi's political operative. And you've been rewarded richly for it. And I, what I am opposed to is a double standard. One set of rules for us, one set of rules for you. And that is what you have always espoused. You didn't complain when I didn't get documents. In fact, you told me I should have...
Well, you shouldn't complain when you didn't get your information. You said that. You didn't say a word.
No, you're out of order. You cannot see residents that way.
I didn't. I also would like to point out that I wrote to Senator Weinberg. I didn't get a response either.
Oh.
But I will be taking advantage of her offer and I will be writing to you about my elect complaints, which have been outstanding for four years. I will be writing and I expect to get a response on the complaint and why it took four years. I also will be writing about my Attorney General complaint, which have been outstanding for four years. And I want a, I want a response and I want an explanation for why it took four years.
Can you address the council, please, and not the police?
You're not in charge of this.
Apparently, no one is, so I'm going to take over. I got patience.
I also think that we should be pointing out to Councilwoman, to our Senator Weinberg, that we have serious concerns about information leaks in this town. We have a lawsuit filed by a patrolman in this town against the borough, which includes a list of the medications taken by Lieutenant Muir. And I'd like to know how that patrolman got that information because clearly, we have a leak problem. As for spin, I don't think there's anything that spins things more than Karen Geiger's publication, Eye on the Cliffs. She gives big headlines to all the Democrats lawsuits, but she buried mine in an article on another subject. So as for spinning, she's the queen. But my big concern is what was actually in my email, which is the use of threats and criminal proceedings by Ms. Park and some of her political allies in the back to intimidate people into foregoing their constitutional rights. The email which Ms. Park sent to the prosecutor attempts to get him to file criminal charges against the borough attorney. Councilwoman Park filed criminal charges against me, which were dismissed, but I had to deal with them. Melanie Simon and her running mate Nora Jobson attempted to get criminal charges filed against people. You've sworn to uphold the Constitution.
Mrs. Muir, please speak to the council.
Well, Senator Weinberg and the rest of you as well have sworn to uphold the Constitution. And there seems to be a looking of the other way when people actively attempt, or certain people, to deny people or intimidate people into not using their constitutional rights. And if Senator Weinberg is truly concerned about Englewood Cliffs, she is going to deal with the fact that people in this town are being bullied and intimidating into foregoing the constitutional rights that our ancestors fought for.
Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard? Motion to close this call.
Second.
Our favor. I was going to skip ahead in the agenda to come back. I see Lieutenant Muir is here with his family and friends. I'd like to swear you in so that the children can get back to wherever they have to go. I'm sort of happy to go back to school. Here today to wear in, and stop Europe, and Captain Europe.
Mayor, Mayor, do you still want to get in the picture and we can take pictures for them? Do you want to be in the picture?
I want to ask you to be in the picture. You hold the mic. Lieutenant Muir, let's see after we've... I stop Europe, I stop Europe, and solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the state, to the state, and to the governments, and to the governments established in the United States, established in the United States, and this state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people. I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Captain of Police, of the office of Captain of Police, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, in the name of the Lord.
Thank you. I'm here. That's in that country, is that right? Okay, thank you. Yes. I'm tired of it. Thanks, love. I get to be, I don't know. I'd like to know why. Come on, shoot, shoot on. No. No. Better?
Okay, let's move on to the Resolutions 18-125. Payment of Claims, May 10, 2018 through May 29, 2018. Seven hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Can the public take their conversations outside, please? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second. For a roll call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park, yes. O. McMorris?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Okay, that passes. Next up is 18-126. Appointment of Counsel for Defendant Ellen Park in Eastwood versus Borough at L. Docket number B E R L 2490-18. Can I have a motion?
Second.
For a roll call.
Let's have an amendment, please, to make the appointment of Murphy, Orlando, I think it's LLP, as described in the solicitation materials I sent to the council.
Okay. Would that change?
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
I just want to put on the record that I have, I understand.
Point of order.
Point of order.
It's not time for discussion, it's time for voting.
Well...
You could put it on the record afterwards. Yes, I know.
No.
Okay. I'm recusing. Okay.
O.?
No.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Yes. 18-127, Appointment of Hearing Officer or Other, after this is done.
No, point of order.
Yes, what would you like to say?
I just want to say that you cannot force me to retain an attorney that I do not want.
No one's forcing anyone to do anything.
That's all I'm saying.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
If I'm listening to a court judge, I think this is never going to stop. I'm going to make a motion, I know you're going to kill me, but I'm going to make a motion to dismiss all charges against Chief Chaffee. I'm not spending another nickel on hearing officer or anything else that's out of control.
That motion cannot come to the floor right now.
That motion is on the floor.
It cannot come to the floor because there's been no deliberation.
This is a special, this is a special meeting. We cannot do that. It probably requires a Rice notice. It certainly was required to be in the public notice. I need to be on the agenda.
It's not appropriate.
I second the motion.
No, 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 no.
There is a motion on the record.
We follow the rules, Robert's Rules of Order. It is not on our special agenda. I know you're looking at Mr. Mullins in the back telling you what to do. It's lovely how you all work together, but we're not doing that today, and stop playing games, okay?
I'm not playing games.
We have various serious matters to discuss and to resolve. All right, 18-127, Appointment of Hearing Officer.
We'll get on the floor in a second.
No, there is not. We cannot.
It is an improper motion, contrary to law for special meetings, contrary to all the laws governing hearings and disciplinary matters. It cannot be entertained.
Okay, so what do we need to do to entertain that? Go entertain yourself.
You can request that it be put on an agenda of a meeting, but first, there needs to be procedural things done to properly handle it.
I know you need to protect your friends, but this is not the way to do it, okay? This is not the way to do it.
Ridiculous expenditure.
If that was the case, you would have revoted things back 10 years, but you didn't.
Move forward.
All right, 18-127, Appointment of Hearing Officer or Other Action. Are we doing this?
Yes.
For pending disciplinary matters regarding Chaffee and for remainder of 2018.
And I would like the motion to be amended to do Brian Kronick at the rate of $160 per hour, and that is for disciplinary for the rest of the year, including the one involving Chief Chaffee. Hold on.
Spell his last name.
Kronick, K-R-O-N-I-C-K.
Thank you, Carol. Put the record on, I'm recusing now.
Yes.
Do you have a motion? Second. Roll call.
Councilperson Versa?
I don't know.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorris?
Recusing.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the next thing is the Rice Notice Hearing of Chief Michael Chaffee regarding chief actions with respect to overtime directive.
He requested that I send something. He did it by the Rice. He asked for.
Okay, we're not doing that today.
Right, we'll do it on one next one, next meeting.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second. Our favor. Have a good day, everyone.